Ladies and gentlemen, this is the Republican Council of the City Council. Our members, the important citizens of Southfield as well. Let's put this call to all.
Thank you. Mr. Moss?
Here.
Ms. Jordan, if Mr. Pritchett?
Yes.
Mr. Cyberg?
Here.
Mr. Fraser?
Here.
Mr. Liam? Ms. Seymour?
Here.
Give some numbers, President.
Thank you, Madam President. Please stand and join us in the following.
Our citizens, we declare the United States of America and the Republic of Canada one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to just announce to the members here who have still phones, please turn them to my library or turn it off. And, um, depending on the technical basis, if they're likely to have someone who wants to turn them off. First item this evening is three presentations, uh, to the, um, what are we looking for?
Uh, Human Services Director.
Human Services, yeah. Please come forward, please. Don't think I don't know her.
All right. When you have an address, uh, with you. I go absolutely. Um, tonight, I would like to make a presentation in conjunction with our mayor and our city council, and I would like to see Councilwoman to come down and join me and the mayor as well, please. As we honor Southfield resident Jim Wojciechowski, as well as, just come on in, please, as well as the Southfield Goodfellows that we have represented by now, they weren't certain they would have someone tonight.
Uh, fantastic.
And also Raymond James and Associates. Uh, each of these individuals, organizations, and companies have expressed and demonstrated great philanthropy this past year, and we'd like to honor them publicly tonight for all that they do.
And I am the Councilwoman.
I'm the Councilwoman of Ray.
And you're the new president, and this is our first time meeting, so thank you very much. And Angela Ray, your comment is also here as our past president, Goodfellows as well.
Ah, my turn.
Hold on a minute.
Thank you. To all the ready suckers this evening. Um, first, I'm going to honor Jim Wojciechowski. Jim is an amazing young man, uh, who, as part of his academic program, has never to create a fundraiser to support the Human Services Department. And to that end, we have a joint resolution that we would like to read on your behalf, and thank you for your efforts. Thank you.
Joint resolution and recognition of Jim Wojciechowski. Whereas, Jim Wojciechowski is a 25-year-old Southfield resident who enthusiastically embraced the idea of philanthropy and community service. And whereas, in partnership with Landmark Education and the Southfield Department of Human Services, Mr. Wojciechowski combines his passion for autos and fitness by developing a fundraiser event that's another one his love for Southfield communities. And whereas, Mr. Wojciechowski organized the Ton of Fortunes event, 5K Run Walk on April 15th, 2012, Covenant Presbyterian Church in Southfield, to raise funds to assist Southfield residents with emergency auto repairs directly affecting their employment and ability to care for their families. And whereas, Mr. Wojciechowski encouraged his family, friends, fellow church congregants, and other residents to participate in this charity worldwide endeavor, raising over $3,500 to help residents in need of emergency auto repairs. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the mayor and council of the city of Southfield, county of Oakland, state of Michigan, do hereby recognize and congratulate Mr. Jim Wojciechowski at the Southfield Ton of Fortunes event that raised over $3,500 to help those in need of Southfield. It is further resolved that we, the mayor and city council, convey our collective commendation to Mr. Jim Wojciechowski, Covenant Presbyterian Church, and the many volunteers and donors who participated in this charitable community service act dated the 14th day of May 2012, by Honorable Mr. Lawrence and all of our city council.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
I appreciate, um, the acknowledgement, and, uh, you know, it was really, uh, really humbled and honored to be able to serve the community. And, um, thank you for recognizing me, and maybe we'll do it again. So, thank you.
Maybe. Yeah. Thank you for recognizing us. Someone we all know is this councilman.
Please stand and wait. Our second resolution is the recognition of the Southfield Goodfellows. Whereas, in 1946, a handful of concerned citizens of Southfield Township recognized the need to assist a small number of families for the holiday season. And whereas, the group chose to pursue this mission by emulating the traditional Goodfellows program, community religious service organizations, as well as companies and local government, where each act to commit two members to direct the Southfield. The response was overwhelming, and thus, the Southfield Goodfellows organization was formed. And whereas, since the early beginnings, Southfield and Lakeville Village have become incorporated cities whose needs are built along with their population. And whereas, today, the Southfield Goodfellows are an all-volunteer, nonprofit, 501(c)(3) organization with the primary goal of ensuring that no child in Southfield or Lakeville Village is forgotten during the holiday season. And whereas, the organization also assists in being food required and is needed among senior citizens in the community throughout the holidays and year. And whereas, every fall, volunteers of the Southfield Goodfellows undertake the tremendous efforts of organizing a holiday gift and food basket drive and newspaper sales to supplement the needs of Southfield families experiencing economic hardship and to ensure that Southfield seniors and children enjoy a peaceful holiday season. And whereas, while Southfield Goodfellows have long realized individual and community donations to support the philanthropy, it is important to note that the Goodfellows' generosity is extended throughout the year through their donations to the Southfield Human Services Department. And whereas, the Southfield Goodfellows donated $2,020,000 to the Southfield Human Services Department to support the Human Services Emergency Relief Fund, a financial resource that helps residents avoid eviction and utility shutouts in the need of other critical needs. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the mayor and council of the city of Southfield, county of Oakland, state of Michigan, do hereby recognize and congratulate the work of the Southfield Goodfellows and the many volunteers who donate their time, talents, and resources to help others in need. It is further resolved that we, the mayor and city council, convey our collective thanks and appreciation to the Southfield Goodfellows and the many volunteers and donors who contribute back to the community in so many ways during the holidays and throughout the year. Date is the 14th day of May 2012, by Honorable Mr. Lawrence and all of our city council.
I guess, uh, we'd like to thank you for recognizing us. Um, I'm the past president after eight years, and Iris was gracious to take the new presidency, and hopefully she'll stick around eight years or longer. But we did spend our pleasure to serve the community. Um, as a child myself, recipient of Goodfellows, my family and I wanted to give back, and we encouraged others to do the same. We had a great group of people, and we've got great people coming behind us, so thank you very much.
And I'd also like to add that the Goodfellows have been generous in this program year after year as unspoken heroes, and I just wanted me to publicly acknowledge all the support you've given to me throughout the year, and after the holidays. And my dad was also a Goodfellows recipient, so it's also here near my heart. My last, uh, recognition this evening is for a corporate neighbor, Raymond James Associates or Raymond James Financial, um, who donated very generously of office furnishings after they were reorganizing their current facility here in Southfield, and wanted to donate, uh, very, very fine furniture that was in very good condition but no longer met their needs, and found my department as a worthy recipient. So, uh, joint resolution and recognition of Raymond James Financial. And fortunately, they were not able to bring a representative here this evening. Whereas, Raymond James Financial is a diversified financial services holding company with offices in Southfield subsidiaries engaged primarily in investment and financial planning, in addition to investment banking and asset management. And whereas, founded in 1962 and a public company since 1983, Raymond James Financial has approximately 6,500 financial advisors serving 2.4 million accounts in 2,600 locations throughout the United States, Canada, and overseas. In addition, total client assets are approximately 372 billion, of which approximately 3 billion are managed by firms, asset management subsidiaries. And whereas, Raymond James has also been recognized nationally for its community support and corporate philanthropy, ranking the company as one of the best in the country, customer service, a great place to work, and is a national leader in support of the arts. And whereas, here in Southfield, Raymond James continues to build upon their national reputation as an involved corporate citizen, generously donating office furnishings to the Southfield Human Services Department following their recent office space reconfiguration and reorganization. And whereas, Raymond James' donation of office suites, barber cabinets, and expensive conference tables have enabled Southfield Human Services to better serve the community and to expand its services to those in need throughout the city. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the mayor and council of the city of Southfield, county of Oakland, state of Michigan, do hereby recognize Raymond James Financial as a responsible and generous corporate citizen. It is further resolved that we, the mayor and city council, convey our collective thanks and appreciation to Raymond James Financial for the donation of office furniture and equipment to the Southfield Human Services Department and residents of the city of Southfield. Date is the 14th day of May 2012, by Honorable Mr. Lawrence and all of our city council.
The next item will be scheduled in the minutes of the meeting, March 26th and April 23rd.
Madam Chair.
Um, Mr. Pritchett.
I'm on the committee of all meeting of March 26th, the special meeting of April 20th, or April 2012. Support.
Motion, Mr. Pritchett, supported by Mr. Fraser, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion has to carry. Next we come to the conservative agenda, and I will, I will read the, um, detail of this for the benefit of, um, the viewing audience and those here tonight. Item C8A, this is an award, a water bid to the, in an active feed amount of $120,000 to H.C. Supply Water Works of Shelby Township, Michigan for water main installation and repair parts. This amount is held flat to last year's total. These items are used for the care of watering grates and the insulation of water taps. Funds are provided for this purpose in the 2011-2012 water and sewer budget and are included in the Department's Confused 2012-2013 budget. Item C8B, item B is a ward of bid to highly maintenance and construction of Ramulus, Michigan in the not succeed amount of $500,000 for the local street heavy engine refurbishment, with the work to occur from mid-June to the end of September 2012. This company has completed similar work for other communities as well as for the city of Southfield. Funds are provided for this purpose in the 2011-2012 local streets budget. Item CAC, item C, uh, item C is a request for approval of a project agreement with the Michigan Department of Transportation for the resourcing of Civic Center Drive from Northwestern to Evergreen Road. The federal aid portion is $212,500 or 62% of the total project cost. The city's share is $341,227 or 38% of the total. Funding and amount of $230,000 is provided in the 2011-2012 major streets budget, and the remaining $84,227 is included in the 2012-2013 requested major streets budget. This project plan was reviewed at the May 7th, 2012 council study session. Item D is approval of a public request from the Human Services Department to apply for grant funding in the amount of $11,800, of which $5,000 would go to supplement the emergency relief fund for Southfield families in distress, and $6,800 would provide for senior therapeutic programs. Item E is approval of an inter-agency agreement with the Alliance of Rouge Communities to provide for 100 trees to be planted within the Rouge River watershed located in the city of Southfield. The city's natural is the labor to plant the trees. Item F is authorization from the Public Works Director to act as agent to apply for $11,279 in funding from Oakland County for the annual West Nile virus prevention program mosquito control activities. Motion?
Madam Chair.
Uh, Mr. Fraser?
I move that we approve conservative agenda items A, B, C, D, E, and F. Support.
Motion by Mr. Fraser, supported by Mr. Moss, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion has to carry. Next we come to the public hearing portion, and we have a 2012-2013 Community Development Block Grant, known as CBD, CBD Public Hearing, and Mr. Doran, our Deputy City Manager, will lead us through this.
Madam President, Honorable Councilman, Madam Mayor, we are asking the city council to conduct a public hearing tonight to approve, uh, recommendations of our annual allocation of $515,000 in community development block grants.
The community development block grant allows Southfield to develop programs that will uniquely business in our community while addressing the needs of low and moderate income persons. The city of Southfield will begin its 38th year of CBD grant programming on July 1st, 2012. The five-year consolidated plan's main goals are: maintain suitable living environment for Southfield residents with particular attention to the senior population; improve decent housing for low and moderate income households through various housing programs; promote economic opportunities by assisting local small businesses. For the 2012-2013 program year, the city of Southfield will receive $415,211 in entitlement funds. In addition, $100,000 in outstanding revolving funds of the Southfield Home Improvement Program for a total of a $515,000 to $211,000. The proposed action plan includes the following programs. The Southfield Home Improvement Program, SHIB, offers low interest loans for specific structural repairs. Recommended amount is $18,887 of entitlement funds. $100,000 will be from the revolving fund. Rebuilding Together will work in concert with SHIB to renovate houses utilizing volunteer labor. Recommended amount is $10,000. The CHOR program provides funding for minor home repairs for low-income seniors. Recommended amount is $150,000. Code Enforcement will clean up debris for residential and commercial sites that are located in targeted areas. Recommended amount, $56,000. The Emergency Relief Fund provides financial assistance for basic needs to low-income persons. Recommended amount is $27,176. TAW provides needed transportation for Southfield seniors. Recommended amount is $29,724. The Southfield Youth Assistance Program provides scholarships to young people for academic and extracurricular activities. Recommended amount is $20,382. In accordance with TAW guidelines, the Housing Department will partner with the Fair Housing Center of Metro Detroit to promote fair housing practices in Southfield. Recommended amount is $1,700. Program administration comprises operational costs and the salary of one staff division. Recommended amount is $101,342. Tonight, following the public hearing, city council is asked to adopt the final 2012-2013 action plan for community development block grants.
Madam President, if you'd like to, if this be appropriate time to open the public hearing and answer questions and answers.
All right. Um, can the public turn open if there's anyone wishing to say anything? If you can move us, we may have time.
Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-352-9188. I think that our Neighborhood stabilization department is doing a very good job. One thing that I'm disappointed about, and we've all talked about how crime has escalated in the city of Southfield, we know that we have a lot of domestic violence issues. Um, just recently, on the cover of the Southfield Sun, there was a domestic situation that resulted in a murder. I'm disappointed to see that Haven, which is the largest domestic violence and sexual assault, were one of them. Sexual assault shelters in the state of Michigan was not given any money. Now, I know that the city, um, has been talking about that they are low on cash, and you want to do a lot of things in-house. Also remember, you talked about the lack of cooperation you feel that you're getting from the state and from the counties, which I disagree with. I think that, um, everybody is trying to work with the resources that they have. But if you're going to have the attitude like, "We just want to take care of services in-house," remember, you may need the county, and you may need the state. You need to find and reallocate some of this money for Haven. Domestic violence is on the rise. Crime is on the rise. This agency should not and cannot go unfunded. They have been a great supporter of the city. You guys have been a great supporter of them, and I'd like to see you find some money to give to Haven. If you were to take Councilman Cyberg's recommendation and end the car program, that could have been money for Haven. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gerald. Anyone else wishes to record any of the items we've announced? Because, uh, can we, can we all log in? Certainly, your name is addressed for the record, and we have time.
My name is Eli Gordon. I reside at 15671 George Washington in Southfield. I'm a happy resident of Southfield for the past 22 years. I have benefited from the community development program. This past fall, I was the recipient of a roof. We had applied in the past, and we were told that this past year there was only a certain amount of money. Um, in my home, certain things need updating. It has a kitchen dated approximately 1950-something, whenever the home was built. I'm currently looking into refinancing my home, and I was told that in order to refinance the home, I would need to repay the city back the money that we borrowed for the roof. I was wondering if there's an option of some form of a deal under these funds, or something called, someone told me about a subordination, where it's possible the city would retain its second position under the new financing. That is my request.
Uh, Mr. Doran, uh, I don't know whether we can answer him, but would you pop speak to this gentleman? He's supposed to get the $30. What's he, anything we can do for him?
Sure. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, can the public turn and close?
Madam President, I may. Um, with regard to the, uh, domestic violence that, um, is an area of concern, but with regard to the, uh, assertion that crime is increasing in Southfield, these statistics do not bear that out. Be glad to provide a report, uh, to the city council in that regard. Um, with regard to the repayment, uh, we will, uh, take a look and see what we can do for, uh, the individual within the rules, uh, the road for the particular program.
Thank you.
And, uh, Ms. Jordan? I'd like to make a motion to adopt the action plan for the 2012-2013 community block grant.
For?
Motion by Ms. Jordan, supported by Mr. Cyberg, to support the community development block grant, um, funding proposal, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has to carry.
Madam Chair. Yeah, I would, uh, Ms. Gerald, I would like to, uh, kind of, next time we have this come up with, I'd like to see some of the history of how these funds have, uh, been reduced over the years to, uh, to, uh, know how difficult it is to, to, uh, put this money into the categories that we have because of the limited amount of funds. I think it's around $200,000.
Yes, it's, it's been significantly reduced over the last several years, and this year's no exception. Uh, we did have a reduction from last year's levels. Uh, I think Mr. Zar has made up the numbers.
Yeah, yeah, actually, I have a, uh, thirty, we'll add to this year, which will give us 38 years of numbers. Our first year was 1975 through 76, $145,000. Uh, and then last year, um, the number was, uh, 456, 547, 507. Uh, looks like the highest number is right around, uh, $660,000 in 1995, '96. But we have, uh, we'll, we'll add to the most current year. It is a, uh, 17-page report right now, so quite, it's an interesting read. If you're, it were indexed for inflation, it should be about 2.8 million, so.
So, just without inflation, it's been reduced more than a third since, since the high point that Mr. Zar has pointed out, so it is consistently, and so it does make it more difficult to allocate, and we'll make sure we provide the history from now on as part of materials.
And then, after the V, it's been to do more with less, and, uh, it's getting more and more difficult.
The, um, community block grant funds, as you know, is allocated to, to every city based on qualifications across the country, and the continuous decline of those funds from the federal government is a concern for cities across this country. And every year, we have cities lobbying Congress to please, you know, we can understand we're not going to get an increase, but please don't cut it again. And one of the things that we hear repeatedly is that we need to make sure that our Congress people know what the dollars are being spent on and to celebrate that. So when we, we, the buildings that the gentleman, our resident, tonight talked about to receive, we need to be giving these reports to our congressional leadership because we have to make sure that these funds, they help so many people. And the fact is, if those dollars weren't there, we as a city cannot afford. We do not have the funds to do these programs. So, we really need to, um, we've been amazing in what we can do, and to bridge behind some of the things that we funded in the past cannot be funded, but we need to stay on top of that and make sure we make our voices heard.
Next we come to the communication portion, helping agenda, and the first, uh, request And please give in to the judge's direction.
Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan 48037-0155. And, uh... Aren't you guys going to turn the mic off or is it going in now? It is? The mic's not on. I have nothing to say. It wasn't on just a moment ago. Okay. Let me start all over. My name is Pamela Gerald. As you well know, residents, I am an independent voice for Southfield. I can be reached by mail at PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan 48037-0155, or by telephone at I am honored and humbled by all of you who call me, stop me at the post office, gas station, Meyer, Kroger, Sam's Club, at our library, city events, and city halls to tell me that you watch the meetings. Thank you very much, and keep on watching, because you have a right to be informed. As a result of your positive feedback towards me and the information I present, I am interested in representing you as a vote on the city council in 2013. The naysayers will say why now. My answer to that is, it's time for a change. If you are a concerned resident, and you want to help make a difference in this city, please join our newly formed advocacy group, the Southfield Citizens Oversight Coalition. As of today... As of today, we have 30 members, and we're growing, and you can comment on our blog Tonight, I want to inform you about a code enforcement issue involving a Southfield resident running a charter bus service out of his home in the Rooswood subdivision. This particular area is Zone Residential 1 through 4. Over the last 10 years or so, the city has allowed this resident to break the rules, having a vehicle longer than 20 feet and over the weight allowance. Not only has this resident been allowed to violate the code, he has contaminated the Rooswood River, disrupted the neighbors' quality of life with loud noise of the buses running, and the smell of diesel fuel. How did this happen? Mr. Gerald Wicowski, the code enforcement director, his wife, Ms. Sue Lord Wicowski, and Elizabeth Ray O'Donnell, two of our city attorneys, said that this was allowed because the charter bus service was grandfathered in. I asked for the grandfathered-in documentation or statute that speaks to this, and to this day, I have received no information. Is there a business arrangement that goes beyond City Hall that employees and residents don't know about as it relates to this charter bus company? Members of our coalition have been assured by Mr. Wicowski that code enforcement changes are being made, but they're a little too late. A lot of people in that area felt violated, and they moved. Others want to move, and they can't move. The city finally answered our coalition complaints and charged this resident with 14 code enforcement violations. Once this case was assigned to court date, the city adjourned the case for four months to give this man time to correct these violations. Have any of you been given four months to correct violations? No, not at least with your grass. If you have 10 dandelions in your yard, the city calls it noxious weeds. With no warning, code enforcement will authorize cutting your grass on the spot and putting $100 single-line assessment fees on your tax roll. How come code enforcement is not addressing the city-owned and bank-owned problem when they have code enforcement violations? The city and the bank get a free pass to break the city law. Why not give the resident a warning and/or free pass? Tomorrow, in this same chamber, I need everyone in here to return. Tell a friend, bring a friend to the zoning board of appeals, PDSFPM. The charter bus company who parks up to six or eight vehicles in his backyard until dispatched has the audacity to ask for a waiver after violating the law for many years. This is unacceptable and cannot be tolerated. This is not the Southfield standard, in the famous words of our mayor. Tell the city and the zoning board of appeals not to reward bad behavior. On this request for a waiver, say no to the violator, and no to the bus company. No, no, no.
Thank you, Ms. Gerald. The next question is from Gerard Mullin. Mr. Mullin, please give your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Madam President, my name is Gerard Mullin. I am proud to say that since 1968, I've lived at 17880 Lee Street, and since 1961, I've worked in the city, my city, the great city of Southfield. Later this evening, council will be considering the resolution about fracking. This resolution is really dumb. Here's why. The resolution is more than twice as long with the heading for a address, and more than three times longer than the 10th Amendment. And yet, it manages to say absolutely nothing. Let me explain. This resolution states, quote, "supports the passing of federal legislation previously outlined," unquote. What federal legislation? What outline? Give me something concrete. Return me to something pending legislation. Give me an H.R. number. Give me an S. number. Give me something I can Google instead of 11 missing where hases. 11 counted. That's right, 11. That's one more where has than there are canons. And to top it off, this resolution doesn't even define fracking, a word that doesn't appear in any major current dictionary. In short, fracking is a type of horizontal drilling. And yet, not one word of fracking appears in the 552 words, I should say, not one word of horizontal, or slant drilling, appears in the 552 words in this resolution. In other words, this resolution is about absolutely nothing. It sounds just like another episode from Seinfeld. Does anyone on council ever bother to read these fracking resolutions? And oh, by the way, why is the city of Southfield City Council voting on pending Washington legislation? I thought I sent the 11 brothers and Debbie Staffen off to Washington to take care of Washington's business, and you folks here were supposed to take care of Southfield's business. I thought that was the deal, the social contract. At least, that's what I was going to believe in my fifth-grade service class. Perhaps I got it wrong. Maybe I was asleep in the class that day. After all, what do I know about government? I voted for Nixon twice. You folks here have an obsession with Washington. After all, that seems to be your favorite vacation spot. It is a great comfort to me and to every other Southfield taxpayer to know that you folks here are stimulating Washington's economy over there, 396 miles away, with my tax dollars. I surmise this is all part of the new global economy, and you folks are contributing your fair share at my expense. While you folks are fiddling in Washington, Southfield continues to burn due to your neglect. For example, tonight, why aren't you addressing the pressing issue of public safety? We have been without a choir to you for over nine months and a police to you for over a year. What are you folks waiting for? Christmas? Oops, I meant to say another Christmas. Should the folks be more concerned with public safety of your 71,000 constituents here in Southfield rather than holler handful of your green friends over there in Washington to save you? If you folks want to send a message that you're green, put a bike rack in front of City Hall. Or better yet, finish the sidewalks that were started in 1928, Southfield Road, so that someday, the mayor's annual walk can take place on Southfield Road. Remember, all roads lead to Mecca, but only a few sidewalks in Southfield ever do. It seems that you folks have plenty of time for Washington, but no time for Southfield. I think it's time for a change. I urge every voter to monitor closely this vote tonight, and in 2013 and 2015, vote out the Southfield council members who want to be Washington insiders and replace them with Southfield residents who are committed to this city, the great city of Southfield. It is time for a change. Thank you, Madam President, and have a happy fracking good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Gerald. The next, next request is from Stephanie English. Do you think she has a meeting? And, um, is Mr. Toby Voad here? Mr. Toby Voad? Apparently not. The next request, the next request is from Mr. Fred Bunker. Not here, all right. We've had no site plans this evening. The next question, comfortable? We have a three resolutions.
Chair.
Mr. Sherrod, one more.
Would it be appropriate to write a commentary on the comments made by members of the public at this time, or would you like to...
If you wish. Certainly, I mean...
Yes.
If you have a problem, please do.
With regard to Mr. Mullin, the council will discuss the resolutions that they're proposing. I respectfully disagree that, quote-unquote, they are dumb. As a matter of fact, they're far from dumb. There's an article in last Saturday's newspaper that deals with different oil wells within open economy that can be affected. Citizens concerned about the environment, it's already been expressed in open economy, so it comes close to home, as well as throughout the state. With regard to the legislation that's referred to, both federal bills have been referenced in the actual resolution, and we have a person that would be, is an expert in this matter, and council can refer to that person when they, when they review the three resolutions. With regard to the police chief and fire chief, we have a cadre of highly effective acting chiefs, and within January, we stated that the selection process would be placed on hold until council had an opportunity to review the budget and also labor relations implications thereof, which will be discussed within the next several weeks. So, that's the current status. The folks that are in authority have done a tremendous job, and frankly, we have had no complaints of any consequence during this period that have held water under review. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sherrod. We have no site plans this evening. Now, we are at the council portion, and we have three resolutions for adoption before underwriting.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Foundation.
Yeah, I'll attempt to handle the three resolutions. The first one...
Can I point out that you are chair of the...
Oh, sure.
Of the...
I'm not going to turn.
No, no. You are chair of our legislative committee, so I want to point that out.
Sure. I'm the chair of the Legislative and Urban Issue Committee, and two of the three resolutions came to us. The first one was a resolution in opposition to the super PACs. We met and discussed the super PACs, and it's, at this point in time, it's a done deal, really. It's been through the United States Supreme Court, and they ruled that corporations can be treated as people for the purpose of donating money to the election process. That has struck a raw nerve with millions and millions of people around the country, and what our, our discussion led to was, while this may be the rule of law at this point in time, the, we felt that it was important enough that we send a message to the various legislative people in Washington that it was not acceptable to us that these super PACs can be treated as individual businesses or people. And we think the United States Supreme Court made an error in judgment, and we wanted to add our name to the list of folks that are sending their feelings toward, toward Washington to their representatives. So, in our pack this evening, we do have the resolution that supports, it came out of the legislative, our recommendation to the whole council, is that we approve the resolution that is in opposition to super PACs. And with that in mind, I move that we adopt this resolution to oppose the super PACs. For...
Motion on Mr. Bracy, supported by Mr. Cyrus, that we adopt the resolution in opposition to super PACs. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
This record indicates that I abstained with this resolution.
Motion carried with one extension.
Okay.
Go ahead.
The second resolution is, has to do with fracking. And fracking is a, is a process by which oil or natural gas is, is released from the well below the surface of the earth by a method of pumping water and chemicals into the rocks, mostly shale, that, under high pressure, that cracks the rocks and allows the, the drillers to capture the, either the oil or the gas. Fracking, in effect, has been going on in Michigan for a long time, but the type of fracking that has been going on for the past 30 years or so is a straight vertical well, and it takes about 900 gallons of water to, under high pressure, to crack the rocks and capture the, the natural gas. In over 30 years, there has been very little, if any, negative result. However, what's about to take place is a new type of fracking, which allows the drillers to go very, very deep, and even though they go vertical, they can also go on an angle, and it takes almost a half a million gallons of water to, and chemicals to fracture the rock, and that's what fracking is all about. It's fracturing the rocks to capture, to release the, the gas and capture the gas. There have been problems throughout the United States using this method. It has not been tried in, in Michigan, to my understanding at this time, but we want to get ahead of the game and say, we are not in favor of this, because in the other parts of the country, it has caused problems with releasing the natural gas into aquifers and groundwater that eventually gets into the wells and the water supply, the drinking water supply. And I have seen examples on TV of areas where it's, it's in. A bad situation where you can turn on the water faucet in your kitchen and strike a match in micro water, because there's enough gas that has been mixed in with the water that can actually burn the gas that's embedded in the water. I'm not a, I'm not an oil expert or a natural gas expert, but I don't think that having that introduced into our drinking water is to the benefit of anybody. So, in our discussion at the Legislative Committee, we decided to recommend to the whole council that we would like to have further study done before the fracking is actually used in Michigan. So, with that in mind, I move that we support the resolution and approve the resol, resolution that, that has, that causes further study and to find out whether or not this will be a, a problem in, in Michigan. For...
Mr. Mullin.
Yes, Mr. Cyrus.
I would just like to add that this is a very real issue for us in Open County. There are gas wells across the county, and a number of homes in Southfield get their water from the ground, well water. And that was one of the reasons why we took this issue up, because I think of a number of residents, particularly on the west side of the city, who are, their water supply is not the Detroit water system, but ground wells that are dug in Southfield. Whole neighborhoods in Southfield get their water from natural springs. And so, this is just sharing our concern for residents of Southfield, as well as business in Open County and the state of Michigan. They have a very, very real connection to this topic.
I would also like to add that while an opinion was, was given that it's a dumb resolution, I, I believe that we would be just as guilty of sitting on our hands and doing nothing, and then have some negative consequence come up, that there would be a, a whole line of people at the microphone saying, "Well, when you knew it was coming, why didn't you do something about it ahead of time?" So, I think we're guilty of trying to get ahead of the game.
Can I make an additional comment?
Yes.
Yeah, you know, and we just had a wonderful video presentation earlier about how we were going to delineate the funds through the CDPG funding, so, you know, we, we voted to support that and help our most local needs here in Southfield. This resolution isn't done at the expense of any local issues that we need to address. This resolution isn't done at the expense of any local issues that we need to address here. And as was mentioned by the administrator, this is the front page of the prepress that says, "Oil: Oakley County Drilling Fears Arrives," that really just talks about this process. And this is from May the fifth. So it couldn't be more timely moment to really take advantage of the momentum in seeking out further information before this process really comes into our own backyard.
We can have a presentation, I think, studying from someone who, I'd like to have that person here tonight.
Your good-
Yes, and I would like to step forward to the, in the, well, the, 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 the environment. The environmental community has pretty much come out against it. I know the Air Club has, we're a highly respected organization, national organization. The Great Lakes area that we are in is such a unique environment with all the fresh water that we have that if people don't know what the chemical could be used that will be released into the, into the water, as Mr. Counsel has spoken. Would you introduce yourself, give us your name and address and tell us your organization you represent, sort of, or what it is?
Sure. My name is Lena Koczek. I'm a firm resident. I work in Detroit. Our address is twenty-seven, twenty-seventh Second Avenue, Suite 136.
And the organization name?
Food and Water Watch.
Thank you.
Thank you for considering this resolution and thank you so much for having me here tonight. As I mentioned, I'm here representing Food and Water Watch and our roughly twelve thousand Michigan supporters, about a hundred and thirty who live in Southfield. Hydralisk fracturing and earth fracking is the process of injecting water, sand, and chemicals at high pressure into the ground in order to let open bedrock release natural gas. Fracking has been going on in Michigan since the nineteen sixties and since then, high, nearly twelve thousand wells have been dug. These are typically shallow wells between five hundred and two thousand feet. They use roughly fifty thousand gallons of water to drill the wells. This information is all available on the DEQ's website. Now, however, new unconventional technology is being used to access much deeper deposits of natural gas. This technique called horizontal fracking allows us to drill much deeper, roughly seven thousand to twelve thousand feet deep, and then turn the drill bit and drill horizontally as far out as two miles. This uses, on average, five and a half million gallons of water each type of well has to be fracked. Between forty and seventy percent of that will return to the surface that needs to be filled with. So that's wastewater that's taken out of our water supply rather because we're now contaminated with over five hundred different chemicals. The process of fracking poses unacceptable risks to both our water resources and public health. Over a hundred and eighty municipalities across the country have passed measures to ban or limit fracking. In other states where fracking has been going on for some time, there have been over a thousand documented cases of water contamination. In parts of the Midwest where fracking is increasingly common, residents have reported complications ranging from headaches and blackouts, noxious odors in the air, sudden blindness, paralys, and duct normal ice stuff. Scientists at the Endocrine Disruption Exchange who tested fracking fluids found that twenty-five percent can cause cancer, thirty-seven percent can disrupt the endocrine system, and forty to fifty percent can affect the nervous, inner, and cardiovascular systems. A two thousand and eleven Cornell University study found that the process of fracking also releases methane, which according to the EPA, is twenty times more damaging as the greenhouse gas than carbon dioxide. Similarly, a study released by researchers at Duke University in April of last year found methane levels in shallow drinking water wells near active drilling sites at a level seventeen times higher than those near inactive ones. In the few, in the past few years, it is estimated that oil gas interest has leased near over two hundred million dollars worth of Michigan-owned drilling rights. And just last week, the state again auctioned off our drilling rights, including some in Oakley County. It's time we truly put pure Michigan in the state's tourism and agriculture industries ahead of greedy oil and gas interests. We need to support the industries that make our state great instead of selling off our natural resources to the highest bidder. Last July, Buffalo City Councilwoman Richard Fontana called on Great Lakes City to protect the water by passing legislation similar to Buffalo's fracking ordinance. Since then, several Michigan municipalities have heeded the call for our considering resolutions. As stewards of twenty percent of the world's available fresh surface water, our lakes, our rivers, our groundwater, which is all connected, it is our responsibility to try to learn how is protecting our water. I hope you decide tonight to become the next Great Lakes City to pass the resolution opposing fracking and supporting the frac act, which is Senate Bill 587, and the Breeze Act, which is H.R. twelve forty. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We have, all right, we have a motion by Professor Sefolosian.
Yes.
One, on favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
The representative, Mr. Sider, has a motion that has been passed.
Your good-
Which has been-
Let me state why I abstain from the two that I have. Resolutions are, to me, very important and have a significant impact on those that receive the resolution from the city. There hasn't been enough data, there isn't enough evidence to this body for or against, so that's a position to be taken by myself. And therefore, that's why I abstain. If there is sufficient evidence that fracking or that the previous resolution passed can't be corrupted by federal election laws and fracking can't be controlled by, and, and energy, no one's ever been there. And, and I think I would take the position by, by petition. And, and petition, in my mind, carries a lot more weight than passing resolutions that, that may or may not be seen by the legislature and said to us many times, they see them and they sort of reject. So I, I just feel that we should, in some way, make sure that we define what we, the actions we take that have the most impact for this committee to take the position. And, and I just don't think resolution is going to continue that. Therefore, I abstain.
The third resolution is in support of the full replacement of funding for the revenue loss resulting in the elimination of personal fracking tax in the state of Michigan. And between the times it appeared on our desk until this evening, the, I think, the state legislature, the Senate side is more clearly understanding the impact that the elimination of personal fracking taxes have had on the, the cities and other communities in Michigan and have tried to modify the, the bill so that we do get reimbursement for for the loss of the personal fracking tax. So our resolution this evening is to support the full replacement of funding for revenue, revenue loss resulting from the elimination of personal fracking tax in the state of Michigan. And with that in mind, I move for an adoption of this resolution. For-
Motion by Mr. Frazier, supported by Mr. Sider, that we adopt the resolution in support of full replacement funding for revenue loss resulting from the elimination of personal fracking tax. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has carried.
I have a couple of things I'd like to, for the council portion.
Yes.
Yeah, this is after, for this morning, I was writing, I was writing down eleven mile road as, if you go up Telegraph Road and then make the, the sharp turn, go past the auto dealerships and the, uh, toys are up, headed toward the post office. I noticed that there is, uh, the chain link fence along there has been destroyed in several different places. The poster down, the fences laying down in some areas. And I don't know if that's the M.D.A.'s problem to repair or the city's or shared, but someone needs to take a look at that and find out how do we get that foot back in, back in the workplace.
We will, we will pay that space because of tomorrow morning.
Okay. And the, the second thing is, I don't know if you all remember these, these pictures that most of us got, and it came on April seventh, and this was in, near Kingswood Place where the citizen sent us an email that said, you know, eighteen D is not a very good citizen. Well, it turned out it wasn't eighteen D's concern, it was DTE's. And I, I believe that our code enforcement people got to DTE and, and told them that there was a safety hazard and, and needs to be repaired. Well, tonight I was watching the news before I came to the meeting and this past Tuesday, they referred to Channel Four's Ruth to the Rescue. Tonight she was reporting that it's fixed. But between April the seventh and last Tuesday, apparently nothing had been done, but they gave us a, the DTE gave us the, a story that it was part of a project, which she also talked about this evening, was part of the project, and this is that one of the project. The bottom line is, they filled in the holes and while it doesn't look all that good, it's at least safe. My concern is, we've had a number of issues with DTE and we have DTE come to our meetings and tell them what the concerns are and maybe something happens, maybe it doesn't happen. But in this instance, it didn't happen. I think we need to escalate who we deal with at DTE and have them make, make our issues, take our issues more seriously. We're representing the community, we're representing citizens in Southfield, and if DTE isn't taking us seriously, when we invite them in and explain to them that our citizens have a quality of life issue, then maybe we, everybody has a boss. Maybe we need to get to the boss so the boss can say, maybe I'll pay more attention than City of Southfield, not Southfield. But something could have happened and we would have been in a paper because one of the holes, according to the story on TV tonight, was almost likely to fill the water and had no barricade around it. So if some child would have fallen in there, anything could have happened. But Southfield would have been on television with a, a negative mark behind us. So I think we need to get to the right people at DTE and say, look, folks, we're serious about getting things cleaned up here in Southfield, and we want your folks to be just as serious about it as we are. So I don't know who would handle that, but I know a couple of people at DTE that may be able to shake the lens a little bit if it was necessary.
As Chair, I would agree that taking that long is pathetic, unacceptable, and we will, we will redo the structure of DTE. We have, as you'll counsel recall, when we had a meeting with DTE, we asked for their assistance in certain community development areas, and I don't believe we've had a, if we had a response, Mr. Zard, are we all waiting for one?
We are still waiting.
We're still waiting, so I think, I think your intentions are, are right on point.
Yeah, we used to have a, setting it once around it up, so give the right, give the people that are supposed to deal with it the, an opportunity to fix it. If they don't, then we need to go up again.
Our personnel were on this and they were given promises that the promises weren't kept.
Understand that. That's what we need to, to get to, to the right people at DTE.
Yeah, Chair.
Yeah, I, I agree with the fellow councilmen, but it seems that, that we didn't, left less response from these companies and, and the state, the federal government, as we tried to perform services here in the city for, actually, for corporate businesses. It's not only, you know, DTE and not only eighteen here on the smart meters, you know, it was kind of passive. I mean, I mean, they was like a pony show here. It just did not sink in. They didn't come in and explain anything and we ended up having the resolution to make it an option for individuals to accept it or not. But it really wasn't anything where they stated, you know, that you have the facts and, and this is what we are going to do and we want you to be educated on it and, and we want you to approve of it. I mean, let me get, let me get to that point. And, and same, same example goes, Mike Abowski and I talk frequently on it. For three years, the boulevard at, at Telegraph Road had not been repaired. And, and I'm getting ready, I got pictures and I'm sending this week out a letter to the, to Market Transportation and a copy to the governor because, you know, when they're talking about economic development and we sit here with corporate people on Telegraph Road and they put asphalt in Southfield and in Northfield, of Southfield, they put beautifully curved concrete, you know, and then when you go up to Kimball, it sounds like this season, and nine mile, ten mile road and, and Telegraph Road, that asphalt must have been already. I mean, so we're still, you know, this, they diamond saw it, they, that's the terminology mine, they've cut it. I mean, it's kind of like all the experiments have been, good, refill road, they used, you know, crushed rubber tires and that fell apart. I mean, I'm tired of them experimenting in this city and, and we did a poor job and we have to live with it. And I don't know how, it feels, it can make a whole, we're going to have to discuss, you know, how we can get the most impact, but we have a problem, how are we going to get it resolved? I, I totally agree with you. They just don't jump them. When Ruth, when Ruth gets a lot of television, you know, they, they hop to it, you know, and, and I told a person one time that I was going to hear him and I spoke and the guy just dismissed me and he was spread away in the back, oh, hi, Mr. Smith, you know, I guess he sits there, he's meeting and he didn't know him. But I said, you know what, I said he represented seventy, at that time, seventy-six thousand people, and I said, you can know me. And, and I guess that's what I see happening in this city, we're getting, you know, the extra road was done poorly, fracturing road was done poorly, Telegraph Road is poorly done, drill line isn't done. You know, and I'm getting tired of it, I really am. I've never seen these governmental entities not follow up, they haven't fixed twelve mile road yet, or they haven't dipped Evergreen Rovers. If you went down that side, they've got the banks, flowers still, you know, floating out of the, the pipe, the pipe path, you know, and they marked it, I don't know, a year ago, two years ago, and still, you know, if you ever walk down it in the wintertime, you'll fall in the rear end. So I don't know, I'm just getting tired of the poor service we're getting and I know the art has really put out, and they have to work with these individuals, they're so passive. But I guess we have to go right up to the front door and tell them the doors anymore and make sure they know about this.
On the brighter, I'd like to mention two upcoming community events. The Inside Out Project, Student Metaphor Company Project that last year, about a hundred and twenty portraits on Evergreen and Civic Center and at Ten Mile Road. This year, the project will be expanded, it's going to feature three hundred and eleven student portraits on hold, and they will be placed across the community. There's an opening celebration, publics invited on Wednesday, May twenty-third, from five to six thirty PM in the Southfield Public Library. This is the Inside Out Southfield Project, and you can look for the photographs. Secondly, I'd like to mention that on market calendars, on June twenty-fourth, Sunday, June twenty-fourth, from two to five PM, the Southfield Park and Garden- Garden Club will be holding its sixth annual garden walk. Uh, this year, the featured neighborhood, it moves around the city every year, and this year, the featured neighborhood is Roseland Woods. Um, you can check in at Brace Letterly School, and parking is at Brace Letterly, uh, there's a pre-cut shuttle that'll take you to, uh, the home and, uh, Roseland Woods. Uh, we'll have more about this, uh, upcoming meeting. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes. Just one quick item, going off of, uh, some of the positive things that are happening in and around our city, the great city of Southfield. Uh, the mayor and I, uh, attended on Saturday the fiftieth anniversary celebration for Orchards Children's Services, which is a gem of the city of Southfield, providing assistance to children in need in this entire area, uh, in their, uh, in their headquarters in Southfield. Foster care services, adoptive care services, mentoring, tutoring, you name it. Uh, so it's an important organization, marketing, huge milestone, um, and we're happy to be on hand, um, to wish them a happy great fifty years of success, uh, moving forward from their previous fifty years of success.
Uh, I want to add something that, uh, I don't know how many people in this community are aware of, but speaking of the Inside Out Project, Detroit Institute of Art has posted around our city, uh, here in the municipal complex, at, um, Ingle, Inglewood Park, um, several of our locations throughout the city. They, from what I'm told, actually invented the, the phrase Inside Out. At one time, they had copyrighted it, but they have, uh, reproduced, uh, some masterpieces from the institute's collection to attract local communities to come on down and see what they have at the main museum. Uh, I spent many years living in the neighborhood, like a law tutor at Detroit Institute of Art, and absolutely fabulous institution, and to get a chance to go and see it and, and see the beauty that's in there, it's a wonderful experience. But, uh, they've been developing, uh, programs to encourage communities to be more aware of what they, what they're doing, and has the DSO, Detroit Southern Orchestra. So we've got a lot of, uh, things trying, you know, coming into our community that are, are inviting people to come take a look and participate, and I'm very encouraged by that, and I just wanted to mention to those who might not be aware of it, walk through some of these major areas around the, um, municipal complex and Inglewood, uh, there's one or two other that might be.
Beachwood.
Thank you. Um, beautiful opportunity for us to just say a little bit about what's going on in our major institutions. We do have council two expense reports, that we call the council portion.
Madam Chair.
Uh, go ahead, let me do this, no, collect, Mr. Frasier.
I move the approval of the expense report for Donald Macassie for the Detroit Economic Club for April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twelve.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Frasier, supported by Mr. Moss, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion, yes, carry.
I move that we approve the expense report for Donald Macassie for the Legislative Day in Lansing, Michigan, May second, two thousand and twelve.
Motion by Mr. Frasier, supported by Mr. Moss, all in favor?
Aye.
And I will, I will, uh, that's all right, I'm aware of that, but I can show that Mr. Macassie has a thing.
But I, I also would like to speak to the seat.
All right. Um, my, I, Mr. Frasier.
We have an old chair from a city administrator, in reference to the, the Blue Cross that used to be in our city, and they moved out. But it seems that the Blue Cross organization, in lieu of taxes, they didn't pay us taxes, uh, offered to pay the community foundation the amount of eighty-four thousand dollars a year in lieu of taxes, and every year, it goes up five percent. I think we have a problem here. The Community Foundation is a private foundation, and it's a nonprofit organization, am I right? Nonprofit?
It's not.
Ruth, to the chair, that they're, they're, they're designated recipients of those funds under agreement, uh, and the reason I provided that number is that often comes up when there's a, for example, there was an item earlier, uh, where, uh, the Human Services Director was asking for authority to apply for a grant to the Community Foundation, and that question often comes up, so I've provided it as background information, uh, to the council. But, uh, that's been a longstanding agreement, uh, with, uh, point of request.
All right. What I want to know, is that a proper procedure, that we do it?
Well, the procedure's proper because it went through our legal department, and as to whether it could be changed or altered, uh, I would defer to a city attorney on that, and I would imagine that it could be. But that's the, that is the current situation, that, uh, that every year, the Community Foundation receives that amount of money, adjusted upward of five percent per year.
Well, I'm, I feel like changing the, the current situation, just about that eighty-four thousand dollars would do better coming to the city than not to a foundation. All right, we'll, we'll break it up again and talk about it. Cyril, you build.
I have a question.
Yeah, I just would like to take a moment at, uh, the meeting that we had up in, in, in Lansing, uh, I was with the Simcod Task Force, and we started at ten o'clock in behalf of all of members of the, with one of the House or Senate legislators, and, uh, and I think that, uh, we had impact on the ones that we met with. We ended up the day at four thirty in the afternoon, the full date. Uh, but I do want to thank personally our city administrator, who prepared me and gave me the documents that I was able to, uh, have the impact with, and, uh, and I handed those pieces of documents to, uh, the legislators, and, and especially the chair of the finance, Senate Finance, and, uh, and a quote of confidential numbers, you know, but, but, uh, made me feel that those were really important, which they were. So I just want to thank you publicly, Jim, because those numbers were very important to, and, and Southfield's story had been told.
Thank you, Mr. Macassie. Anyone else? Thanks for coming to the mayor's person. Anyone?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I also want to give an update on, uh, some events that are happening in the city. Um, before I start, uh, I just do want to interread again, I don't know if Mr. Jordan is still here, but I really, really am concerned about maintaining the property that the city of Southfield owns in this city. And, uh, I've made this request, this is my third time. Um, it's no more tolerable for our property to look unaccessible, not meeting Southfield's standards for private residents. Um, and through the chair, I'd like to request that we can get a report on what is the maintenance of the vacant homes, and I saw one home, and I don't know if the city did it, but it was a vacant home, and the grass was just wet down, and it was left on the sidewalk, and it was just, obviously, just someone came up.
That is not acceptable. We, uh, we have contractors, and their job is to cut that lawn edge and make it look good, so I don't know how that happened. Uh, we are turning up the heat on the whole subject, though. Uh, they got behind because of the weather, basically, uh, but we have to play catch-up ball and get, uh, you know, get, get everything in good shape.
And, you know, um, I know when I brought it up last week, it was said that the properties were being sprayed for, uh, the weeds that were in the property, um, fire safety of all places. But I want us to have the same amount of pride in our property as the city that we expect our residents to have, and I will not, um, I will continuously watch that, because it's very, very important to the city, and we are supposed to be leaders. And, uh, if we, if we need a plan of action, we'll come together and find out what that is. I do want to say that, um, Flower Day is coming up, speaking of parents, and the city of Southfield, we started this, this is our tenth annual, uh, Flower Day, and it was started as a result of creating the, um, really the leadership and providing the opportunity for our community to, uh, beautify their property. We give awards to, um, residents all the time, uh, every year, and our, our, um, prize award of residents who go above and beyond and beautify their property. So Flower Day is really a great day in front of our, you know, see residents just kind of mingling around, folks haven't seen in a while. And we do use our own local vendors, so it is a good positive event, and it's something our community can do as well, so I, I, I'm very proud that Southfield do it, does it. And if you can, just come out and, and look at the flowers, you support local vendors, and you also get some ideas, and we have our master garden who's usually out there as well. Um, uh, what is the name of garden? Uh, Garden Committee for Southfield that's out there, and they'll give you some tips. I do want to, um, we have two restaurants, um, that have, um, that are opening, and I, I know it may be exciting to some, or just saying whatever, but the, um, McDonald's, the new McDonald's is being built, will be opening on Friday, the eighteenth, there'll be a ribbon cutting for that at ten o'clock, so we'll have our new McDonald's there. And also, uh, today was the opening at eleven o'clock for the new Popeye's, that was where the Wendy's was, on, uh, Southwood Road. So, um, some of you didn't watch, too, but I, I think that was a great, absolutely. Um, so those two restaurants, I, um, you know, I think it's important for us to get to know, uh, the people providing service in our community, so get to know the manager and owner was there, so that was a good event. I was at, um, at, uh, Inglewood Park, and it was one of the best days, um, um, Councilman Moss was there, Councilman Macassie was there. This is the day we really feel good about Southfield. I mean, the, the park is just packed with children, it's, it's the opening day, I actually get to throw out the thing, it's the opening day for the Little League softball game. And, um, the parents, the children, the, just the community, and pride is just amazing sight, and, uh, it's always good to know that our community is engaged with our children, and we have the venue for that to happen. So that was a great day in, uh, in Inglewood Park. I did want you to know that the city of Southfield continues to, to receive requests to do sister-city relationships. And, um, you know, now I talk about this kind of cumbersome, because you have, there's an expectation of travel and all type things, but with technology now, you can actually have two classrooms talking to each other's kids, and you can have all kinds of, um, opportunities. But we received a visit on Mon, on Monday from a congressman from the Philippines, Congressman Mendaza, Mend, Mendoza, and the governor, um, who, this is a husband-wife change, the husband is the congressman, and Governor Mendoza is, uh, the wife. And so they were visiting, and they were really liking it with the cultural center being here in Southfield, they really expressed an interest in wanting to strengthen that relationship, and we have a few more, and I think I'll just bring the council the request and see if we can get started. Um, the other thing, um, I wanted to bring up is, um, the Memorial Day Program, which will be on Friday, May twenty-fifth, on the front steps of City Hall. We do this every year, we kind of do it in habit now, but we, we, we're one of the few cities that I think has one of the best Memorial Day programs, and it is to honor those who gave their life and, uh, and serve. And I do encourage the community to come out and, um, to participate and to really be part of the, the program and the memory, uh, honoring the memory of those who gave their life. So I do encourage you to come out there, that's on, uh, Friday, May twenty, at the nine o'clock in front of City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, um, Jordan. Mr. Schrute, if you have any questions?
Just briefly, uh, with the chair, um, we have a draft of the resident handbook, as we indicated we would, uh, the last meeting. Uh, want to thank the council for keeping this on the front burner, uh, and, uh, because it is an important, uh, project, um, this is the draft, so we'd like to take a look at it when you get a chance, and, uh, we already have our first, uh, contribution for improvement, so that's what we're looking for. Thank you very much.
Can I, uh, just, um, one comment, sorry?
I have, I've had an opportunity just to briefly look at, uh, what's presented before that we did with the resident handbook. And Mr. Schrute, I was just wondering, that blank page or that, I've jotted the note, and I'll give it to you afterward, to take advantage of.
We, uh, we have some ideas already on that, uh, by one of your colleagues, so bring forth, uh, all the ideas, and if we need to add a page, after we take, use, use up the blank page, we'll do so. Thank you.
This is so important that we really have an opportunity to communicate to our residents what we expect, so, thank you.
I just want to, I just want to add, thank you so much. I can't tell you how often I hear about it in, in your, you know, so many things Jim Schrute does, um, he, he, you know, he works very hard, but he does some things really, really well, and I, I really want him to know that, um, I personally appreciate you, and, um, there's been so many situations that have come up, and to be able to follow your office and, um, trust that you produce, and to see, to actually see that handbook that we need so badly, I really, really want to thank you for your leadership to that. And also, uh, I, I forgot to mention, our community roundtable that we have, um, the staff at Southfield does a great job with the, they come in, they have questions, they have concerns, they're prepared, they're professional, they have no problem giving their actual phone to their desk out to the residents. And that speaks highly of, um, the team that we have, because there's a lot of people who's like, you got a water issue here, call this number over there, but there's, there's the actual, this is my card, and this is my number, call me. And, um, that's, that's what keeps the community strong, and keeps us connected, so I want to thank the staff, and I want to thank you, uh, Jim, for your leadership.
Thank you, I want to thank the staff, I learned a lot the last two presentations, the roundtables, as a matter of fact, so I do appreciate their work, that's, that's why we're responsible as we are.
Mr. Attorney, uh, coming to your question?
The question, uh, the city was served with a lawsuit. Uh, it involves a piece of property that the plaintiff purchased at a tax, uh, auction sale from Oak County. Um, the property was in a blighted condition, in unsafe conditions, the city went through the forty-six district court to have the property either made safe or ordered to demolish. Uh, ultimately, the court ordered that the property be demolished, and the plaintiff who owns the property just brought this lawsuit against the city for damages, and we're asking for authority to defend.
Motion, move.
Motion by Mr. Macassie, supported by Mr. Jordan, to take action to defend the city. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, yes, carry. How do we come to, um, I think, in court? You don't have anything for the staff? The cell server's over there, so, thank you.
Thank you. The next item on your agenda is a request from Cal, Calhoun House Club. Um, they are requesting approval for their annual, um, fireworks permit. This year, they are proposing to hold their fireworks on Saturday, June twenty-third. Uh, the necessary paperwork has been submitted, and it is requested by council, uh, a back to revolution, authorizing, uh, the conducting annual fireworks.
Uh, Mr. Macassie?
All the insurance papers and everything, uh, yeah, all the proper documentation is been violated, the search out, so to go.
I also move the Calhoun fireworks permit. Is it worked?
Motion by Mr. Macassie, supported by Mr. Frasier, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion, yes, carry. Um, continue on, for, for me.
Thank you. The next item on your agenda is to request to schedule an additional council meeting for Monday, June fourth. It will be a scheduled, a whole meeting, and the purpose of the meeting is to discuss labor relations.
And this is to reevaluate, is that right?
Yes.
Motion by Mr. Frasier, that's right, and, uh, for Mr. Skyler, all in favor?
Aye.
To schedule a meeting for June-
To schedule a meeting for June fourth. Um, motion, Mr. Frasier, Mr. Frasier.
Uh, she didn't, um, mention that the meeting on the twenty-first is going to be canceled?
No, no, there is, there is a revise schedule that's highlighted, that the commit a hole meeting on May twenty-first will still be held, it is highlighted. So if there has been a change from the original order that was submitted to you.
Through the chair, I'll take credit for causing a little confusion on this because, uh, we were thinking of possibly moving the twenty-first, but it was never intended for it to go away, we were just looking to, uh, ask to move it, but that didn't work out. So the twenty-first stays as currently scheduled, it's been on the table for quite a while, uh, or been, except, adopted for quite a while, and the request is something to add a meeting, uh, on June fourth. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I move that we, uh, an Act Ordinance number fifteen sixty, report.
Motion by Mr. Frasier, supported by Mr. Stiber, to an Act Ordinance fifteen eighty, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion, yes, carry.
Madam Chair, I move that we, an Act Ordinance number fifteen eighty, report.
Motion by Mr. Frasier, supported by Mr. Stiber, to an Act Ordinance fifteen eighty, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion, yes, carry. Ladies and gentlemen, of course, the council. Seeing none, I declare this leaving the jury.